Motion in second.
I'll make motion to approve the resolution.
Motion in second, all those favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Question carried. Public hearing amendment for FY14 budget. Anyone present with questions or comments? We'll close the hearing. The next one, resolution 2014-04, approving amendment of FY14 budget. Motion second.
I serve.
I'm going again. Second in, all those in. Then they roll call. Karen?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Matt?
Yes.
Question carried. Caitlin, pool operations rate 2014.
Yeah, I've got some other questions I'd like to ask you. And I mean, if you want to wait and discuss some of it later, you know, that's fine. Just let me know before we open. The first thing I've got written down is we would like to change our hours that we are open. We've been open from one to eight, but from seven to eight, there's not hardly any swimmers. We're paying lifeguards to lifeguard maybe terrific kids in the pool. So I checked around in different towns and nobody is open later than seven. All the pools around us close at seven. So we would like to go from one to seven, straight through. That way, if someone wants to rent the pool, they can rent it from seven to nine instead of eight to 10, because a lot of the pool lights don't work. And I think kids up there attend for a party sometimes getting kind of late. So we'd like to do that. Or from at that seven o'clock time, the kid, the lifeguards can do their private lessons instead of after eight o'clock, which makes it better for the kids that are taking lessons. And anybody, maybe we could even do another aerobics class at seven, besides the one we do at six in the morning. I have a problem with this closing at seven. Well, I mean, it's shortened the hours, I know, and people may not like it, but you're paying lifeguards to sit there and there's maybe terrific kids in the pool from seven to eight.
I don't want it.
No, it's not. And you hate to close early, you know, as you say, you're open until eight. So when I checked around, Belitska, Corning, and Mama Corning, and Grant City, and all of them, they close, and Maryville, they close at seven. Okay, all right, great. Prices, didn't know if you want to keep things the same. A daily adult is $4 and children are $3. We had under age two was free. I've checked around, we're pretty competitive with everybody else around, except most of the pools had under four were free. So I didn't know if you want to leave them the same. You know, we cut it out off, but I mean, these prices haven't been changed for a long time.
Guess I don't see much difference between the age two and four.
No, not really. And usually those little kids are in the baby pool anyway.
Yeah.
Would you like to do four?
I'd like to change it to four and under would be free, yeah. Because most of the time, they've got older brother and sister with them, or mom and dad, and they either got passes or they gotta pay to get in. I mean, that four-year-old can't come by themselves. Well, I don't think it would hurt to change it to four. And then the other thing is family passes are 110 and single passes are 85. And I've talked to the lady at Grant City, Gina, and then I've talked to the lady at Belitska, she called me, and we're all very comparative, I mean, about the same. Don't leave it that or change it? Any discussion on that?
It's been a long time.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I mean, it's been this one for a really long time. We haven't reached a state...
Is it Linux's single pass like 95?
Most of them are. Most of them are a lot higher than we are.
It was like 60 for a single.
It's some more family passes than just your years. It's some more single, are more family passes than just single.
The cost for them?
Yes.
So we should probably, my opinion, raise it just to share, just to add so that we don't get to the position where all of a sudden we gotta really bump it. And that will mean people might not miss a block. If we gotta raise it five to $10. So I guess I'd be in favor of very small increment raising it a little bit to keep up the cost.
What, 115 or 120? 115?
Is it 110 then?
Raise it five or you wanna raise it 10?
I'd flip five. Everybody else said 115.
And then maybe a couple of years. Right, okay, all right. Yeah, sounds good to me. And pool rental right now has been $50 an hour.
$100 bucks a night?
Because most people rent it for the two hours.
That includes lifeguards?
That includes lifeguards. Usually I have two besides myself there. I don't usually use anymore two unless it's a huge party. So that easily covers your lifeguards for the two hours.
Do you know what cost rent in pools anywhere?
Um, I don't know what Corning does about theirs. I think there's, I don't know. I'm sure it's probably a lot more.
Yeah.
Yeah. Belitska runs better for about this too, but there's this really, they do different hours and all this now, but they don't have a heat or anything.
You know, a lot of people rent it?
Yes.
They do?
Yes, they do. Last time I think I had a party, but just about every weekend. Yeah. We're doing it at birthday parties and things like that, family reunions. You know, $100 and everybody goes in, some money, it's pretty cheap.
Yeah, it's not bad. And that's not, there's no admission with that either.
No admission, no. Anybody that they invite can come. It's free.
You think those numbers are pretty reasonable then, or?
I do.
Living where they're at?
I think, you know...
Especially if it's getting rented about every...
Right, if we're keep renting it about every weekend, that's pretty good money for two hours.
Doesn't sound bad to me.
Okay, we good then? On the sign up front, one of the things that I am going to change, it, I'm gonna make it so the kids have to be eight to come by themselves. I think it said, I don't know exactly, I know it was, it was, other than that, I don't remember exactly what it was, but we had problems with kids coming, you know, kindergarteners and like that. And so I think we're gonna put it that they have to be eight to come without a parent. Do that. Swim lessons, we're gonna bump it up to $25 and we're going to change it. We're going to split it and we're just going to do one week in each session. So we're gonna do a week in June and a week in July. June the 16th through the 20th, and July the 21st through the 25th. We're just gonna do five days, but we're gonna bump it to an hour. In charge of 25. In that two-week time, we can't get kids, they've got other things going on and they can't come the full two weeks and they're missing out on passing that level. They're not getting all their lesson in because of other obligations. So we've talked to, I've talked to Belitska and they're gonna do the same thing. And we're just gonna cut it to one week, but the lessons will be an hour each day. Yes, June the 16th through the 20th. And then we'll do another one in July, the 21st through the 25th. And that'll be $25. Okay? And then the lifeguards again are gonna do private lessons and they run $45 for the five days. And that's 45 minutes for each lesson that they'll do. They'll do your own scheduling and what you can do in the mornings when there's not lessons and we can do them again after seven, since we've changed that. We're getting ready to open, I hope, toward the end of the month. So what I, what I'd like to do is like we've done before, we'll have a free swim on May the 30th on that Friday from six to seven. And then the kids can swim and then the parents can sign kids up for swimming lessons and be friendly for favorite classes then. So we'll do that on that Friday. Water aerobics again, we're gonna start them June the 2nd. And they'll go from six to 6:45 every morning, Monday through Friday.
Have we run a discount on like season passes if you bought them that night?
Yes, we do. We'll do that again.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, if you buy, we knock like the $5 off.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, we'll give them a discount if they buy that night. Seems like we get more people to buy if we do that. So we're gonna do that. We need to figure out something about getting older people in the pool. The ladies that are coming to aerobics, they're not, they can't get in our pool.
You've got that chair, so...
I know, and they don't want to use it. But they're not handicapped.
That's all I gotta have is that chair to be 88.
I know, I know. But we have some ladies that are the older that want to do aerobics and they just, they can't step down in the pool. They're not wanting to...
That way.
Yeah.
The one we brought last year?
Yeah.
We couldn't get her back up out of the pool.
What's wrong, why don't you want to use the chair? Throw one of the chairs away?
Well, it's for handicap people and it drops, it lowers the people down into the pool. And a lot of the ladies at aerobics, they're not handicapped and they don't want, they just want to be able to get down in the pool. So I didn't know if we could figure out something other than that.
See, that's what we were gonna do, bring this in your block with us.
Yeah.
So we can put one there and one on the step. And because you can't, the step is too tall.
Right, we need just an extra. So I didn't know if there was any money. We could look into getting something that you've got platforms you can buy to help get these people in the pool. Because water aerobics in the mornings, we can have up to 50 people. And they range from the elderly, you know, up to the young kids, the young women. So I didn't know if there was any money we could use. I don't know what's left from aerobics money last year. We did buy a small deep freeze for the pool with aerobics money from last year, so I don't know exactly if there's money left.
Was it last year we had like 750?
That what we ended up with last year for aerobics? It was quite a bit.
Was it?
It's something we didn't do. And I don't, I'm not sure what the deep freeze was gonna cost us either.
Any idea what cost of is what you want is?
For the platform? The platforms I looked at are like $350.
Did they build one or something?
We could if we can find somebody that can do some PVC pipe and then build one. Yes, I think that's what Clorinda did, was they built one.
Somebody to jump that if you give it an opportunity?
Yeah. I look into that, it would be great.
I guess I would say maybe you could give, maybe see how much money there is.
Okay.
Combine that with try to find somebody who wants to help out.
Okay, all right, sounds great. One more thing, I do have a bill here from Gina McNeese. She's in charge of the Red Cross in our area. And to keep our Red Cross certification, we'd have to pay $100. And that will provide us with all the swim materials and documentation, everything we need for Red Cross to enlist. So there's the bill she sent me. And I guess I had like 12 lifeguards, I think. That's what I've got signed up to work for, pretty close to that. Okay, that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Anything else, Caitlin?
Okay, all right, thank you very much. See ya.
Continues your on part 1, 2014, review bids slash applications.
We got three bids. The lowest one was from Weekend Lawn Care and that was $11,675. And that includes one spring and one fall broadleaf control fertilizer and one spring and fall leaf cleanup. And there was one from Clean Cut Lawn Care, Dan Wilkerson. His total was $11,716. That included 6 mowing, trimming, and... That, oh yeah, that also included the weed control and the fertilizer, which we had to call and get another because we didn't have that. And then we got one from Jamie Majors and he just put straight $12,500 for the season.
So the highest bid would be... 50 months, 22 times a year, $568. Can we do it for that, Kenny? Mower repair and paying the employees?
Had three mowers up there yesterday, one.
Didn't do them last week, didn't it three day, how many days?
Pardon?
Did it just take one day to mow last week?
Three guys. Three guys. Eight hours, three mowers.
One mower was broke down for how long? Because I know Bob wasn't there after his mower broke.
Blue, Joe.
Joe, sorry.
He's got one of the, very long before you. And then he went and got some parts. It takes about three mowers, about a day. If you're gonna do it a day.
It's around about 24 hours.
Five? Yeah, maybe six. Probably, I'd say it's probably six.
Depending on what you reach your cost of equipment at, that's gonna be fairly comparable. It's too late to do anything about it this year, isn't it? It's a little bit like it is? I guess so. Yeah, it's kind of my thoughts. And I'd love to see the city act on it, but the money's not there. This really is not the time to be figuring this out. Any else on that, Dan? Oh, move on. Other communications update? Nothing on that one? BAC update?
What's up, what's up? Move back, move back.
Yeah, move back.
What the, who else in the community talked this?
Oh, I'm a BAC. I think we've done it this year, maybe January. And our man ought to have been with us.
Q and A, is Nick still there? Paul McCoy? You haven't had a meeting since you know what's wrong? Can we get somebody here next time to talk to us? Because we've got money, we've got money out there.
I think we've been over to Chairman, but Todd's turned us up. So I was kind of asking him to, I say he would call the meetings and...
I see Bob. I'll talk to you. You want to talk to the, you see Bob or should you see Nick?
I was calling, yeah, I see Vic all the time.
I'll just pass you. We're kind of moving forward.
Okay, BAC update. I'll give a little overview on that, I guess, since I was at the meeting. I would point that you want to sign me. This weekend, they're having, I guess I'm not even sure what they call it anymore, be the equivalent of the in bloom, or the last year of the in bloom. So there'll be a street dance Friday night. Quite a few events going on Saturday. They're still looking for some volunteers on Friday night to help out with that. They decided to go ahead and pay the dues to Swicko. They did add myself and Karen as one vote. That way, they were having problems, if you got so many people on the board, you have to have so many people for a forum and they couldn't get a forum. They don't think they'd vote on anything for two months anyway, if not three, because there wasn't a forum. Now, there's been some members resign and then they added our vote. Didn't hear anything about the cash in law, but for building supply. We discussed the paint Iowa Beautiful Green. And I think it is 12 gallons for like one storefront. And then the chamber's gonna add another 12 gallons so we can do two storefronts. They're gonna talk to some people about showing interest in painting some storefronts on Main Street. If they can get enough interest, put the names into a hat and then have a little drawing to see who gets their storefront painted. That's about it, financials are... Yeah, on the backside of, when they were in Ohio, when they first got here. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot.
The actual, natural economic development is part of that. Lee was heading it and he phased out as president. I think Anna Peterson's on it. That's all I'm...
I honestly don't know, there's, I don't, I'm kind of new to that whole side of things. There's, I know they've got a bunch of committees and they're kind of broke down into groups. I have no idea.
I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's, that's fine.
Just what I gathered, there's really nobody out there pounding the streets or making cold calls trying to get any businesses to come in.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that. It's enough of a job just to keep things, like, there's a lot of activities going around here.
Yeah.
And I said there's a whole other set of maybe young people who just beg to get back.
I know Lee's been making some calls, doing some emailing and stuff.
As you said, what did the dentist do?
I haven't heard anything on the dentist for a while.
That was due in February, right?
No, January's coming along.
It was due February, well, not January.
Anything else, BAC? Move on to police share.
One thing Josh had for, for me that he related to me was he wanted to, maybe there was something on the agenda for what you guys thought about nuisance abatement or... I can't remember that.
True.
True. You guys were happy with her cleanup or not?
I meant that for a while, yes.
Did they ever vote on that?
Yeah. It was rezoned.
It wasn't rezoned.
No, you're right, that was residential. I'm picking on old one, uh, old two. Yeah, so she was forced to do that.
Okay, I had been by there, so I don't know.
I, yeah, I have neither, I guess.
How's it look to you?
Better.
Better.
Still named. Subject to interpretation. Yeah.
Mania. From my perspective, if you're gonna look at her, you're gonna have to look at some other situations too.
Anything else on that?
Do you know if we got any resolution on the issue with Stills? What's his name? Tyler Stilwai?
Yeah.
Julie, they called in and they had some, they, I talked to Josh, he said he was gonna send, I think, you over. This is one of, I think, like April 18th? We've been over there a couple times.
Okay. I just told her I'd follow up, make sure that...
We told them basically next time that we were visiting that someone would be issued citation. And other than a bunch of verbal stupidity going on, nothing, they hadn't said, they hadn't called back.
It's kind of that time of year we need to start looking at some other properties around town. Kind of getting things. Some that haven't been mowed, some that weren't mowed last year at all.
It's usually a good bid.
We had Steve Molson lined up to do it, so they are bored, had to approve the second bid.
Grasshides, that's just pretty cut and dry, isn't it?
I don't think it says seven inches, doesn't it?
Is that something that we would need to point out to you or?
What's what you need to decide is who's gonna, if you're gonna have an issued citation or if you just go send a letter and say you've got 10 days to mow or we're gonna mow for you. Depends on how you handle it.
I feel like we've been over this.
You did, well, we came, I've been in this last year.
Well, I think the police handled it last year and they issued several citations, I think. And they had, as long as they got the thing cleaned up or mowed or something, then they didn't have to go for it.
You said like who, who needs to, you know, your guys are driving by. You don't have to hear from an official, like, council member or...
I wouldn't think so. But it's up to you guys, wouldn't you guys want to be the ones to generate the address?
I don't want, I mean, I can tell you a couple, but I don't do the grass, please. I'll share that.
So, thank you.
You're so generous.
Appreciate that. That's awful big, guys.
Because they, I just don't, things will move pretty slowly if there's only three, four of us, you know. Let's say if anybody...
We did it that way several years ago, but then the police kind of, they kind of took over that. Now we don't have to do this soon. So you kind of need to decide, I guess, if that's what you want. And just send out letters then, is that what you're saying? Or give a list to the, or give a list to the sheriffs?
I would almost say give a list to the sheriffs.
You just want to bypass it?
Yeah, have them go give them a letter. They don't get a cleanup in 10 days, then they get, then it gets taken care of that way.
Okay.
I think you're gonna get more of a response that way.
It doesn't matter to me.
I think that'll be good.
That's what you think too, because then that letter just isn't a long part of it.
Yep, that's what I would say.
Especially on the grass, the cleanup, you usually get a little bit...
Especially on grass. The cleanup, you usually get a little bit longer, but grass, you know, you if it sits in the post office, and they try to notify him three times, and by the time it comes back here, we don't know they didn't get it, exactly.
Okay.
You're, you're dealing with a bigger issue, and start it.
How often is anybody in this office in contact with Josh or Rick or Ty?
Actually, we, they stop in a few days, plus I, I have Josh's email, and that's how I get ahold of them. He should, I just email him.
So do you wanna do like a, first of each month, or whenever there's a property somebody sees, they let Josh know? Some reasons for you guys.
It's, it's not difficult at all for me to get ahold of them.
So that's how we'll get it to Rick, and then to Josh, and then?
Are you doing just grass, or are you gonna do junkyard work? You just talking about grass?
I think this deal's just on grass, but I haven't seen it just on grass with this deal.
There's one or two, there's a some property in town that would be there's one that part of the building has fallen in. Involved in fire many years ago, and started to add on to it. That's all falling in. Southwest Port town.
We've had a couple calls up in other properties to have worked at. We've had people complain about some properties that are in the neighborhood.
Say, move on.
Those are other than grass, because those were trash and debris, and stuff blowing all over the neighborhood.
It's the big summer.
Yeah, all school. Yeah, I agree, and we need to have it cleaned up in the past.
So if we're skipping ahead to number 11. Are we?
Sorry, no.
Okay. There's a part of the ordinance that says no inside furniture outside, right? That sticks in my mind, is that option.
I know Maryville, but, yeah, I know Maryville, that's for sure.
There's a couch in the O.C., and it's not like they're using them. It's a Russian model, it's a more German brand, used to be.
I was here on the corner.
Water bed now?
He's trying to destroy this.
But it was... It was a hard, hard. They didn't really drive around a whole lot. So what's, what was the question, it starts with which particular item?
I thought there, just, I asked about if there's indoor furniture and sitting outdoors.
Is it discarded household goods?
Is that not in there?
I don't, I don't think so. Like, maybe you would say if they're not inside, they're discarded.
Maryville, what the man on the radio sometimes talks about.
They're pretty specific about their...
I do listen to 79, 97.
Yeah. That's, yeah, that's right for it. Yeah, that's uh, old or discarded household goods or hardware. Probably where that would fall under.
I'm not picking on these people, I think, I don't know if my other kids are nice kids. I think they would probably pick it up if somebody said something, but they're not breaking the ordinance, and I don't worry about it, pick on them, I just... When I got the email from Tame, that's kinda what I saw when I was...
Maybe it's a matter of saying, hey, you got back in, or whatever.
I don't know, I don't know what folks like.
What's that for, to women, add this to all school, where you need to come and let them get clean up their yard a bit? Because there are some people that do go to school here that don't know. So they don't care.
You say, it could be a waste of hangup. 98%.
It seems it's to this point, yeah.
Yeah.
Who knew those properties, you guys, Tom, I'm just going off your discretion.
Do you want us to, do you want us to take care of the ones that we cut?
Yeah, if there's any complaints on them, for sure.
And you've been down and seen them? I mean, he falls up on that, can he?
That's one, I, I know. Bonnie complained about the one near the death.
Yeah, I've seen the main parks that I use every day, but I drive them down every street. Or have, again, I guess.
I've been through a couple of streets. East Jackson Street is terrible.
Representing my house there in the north. Yeah. There you go. What are you talking about on Randall, clear up the north? Two bucks south. Two, three?
Yeah.
Exactly what properties are we talking about? Probably any of this best tidies, or... Were they specified in that email, because I saw it in the, all of a sudden, district. I think I magically deleted it, wouldn't be my case, but...
I didn't take it back.
Okay.
Well, I know we've had down here on Jackson.
Jackson, Jackson and Dog, right in the corner. Jackson Street Avenue.
Right behind me, over there's a little house. Well, all along the anxiety. Illinois North? Casey Street.
Okay, another, well, one, obviously, I got the email about that I forwarded out. Was the Cross from New, is that 701?
Just to go look.
I just saw this there.
It was a few days earlier, so, a little bit, you might, I might have made your email, yes, that could be. If that was the complaint.
Oh. Yeah, levels. Need some attention too.
That was, that was the one we were talking about, the even, with them. Is that one acceptable yet, or?
I wouldn't think so.
One, two, three, four, five, that leaves six of them, six of them, six of them.
So I think this ain't correct?
First bird. It depends on how many times I can consider it, or do it for.
An offer. That one, that we just get this?
Unless you guys have more opportunities, I think the ones that I put in place on.
Yeah, move on to maintenance update.
I don't know if you've noticed or not, but the asbestos is gonna remove from your apartment. If that building falls in now, we're good to go. Clean it up, fix up that nice build, use the bricks in the basement, and what? There's still some tin out beside the building yet. The contractor had to, had a family thing come up this week, so he said it'd be Thursday or Friday before it got back down here to the new tin. It's off the building, just laying in the yard. All he has to do is load it up, alter the random. And then that job will be done. I talked to him about trying to go up there and work on that today, but he didn't seem too interested in that. And I'm gonna have trouble finding the right contractor, I think, for that, maybe. Unless the whole thing, let's say he just considers the whole thing taken away and hauled it up. Still kinda working on that. Uh, the other one is ready to go, too. Once he hauls that tin on there. We could, we could proceed on our own, try to find a local contractor to do that, or we could take bids, or you could sit there and do nothing right now.
How many loads you think?
I just it, it always adds up more than you think it is, won't you?
Where is Creston?
Well, he hauled this, I, I'm gonna have to check. Creston is just a transfer station. So you take it to Creston, you dump it out, and they load it on semis and haul it to Des Moines. It goes to Des Moines. He took the asbestos out of that building and went to Page County landfill. So, I don't know whether they have a C and D section over there in their landfill, for construction and demolition ways. Or because it's asbestos, they could take it. I, I'm not exactly sure. I'll, I'll follow there and find out. Depending on the contractor, it could go out of state. Could go to Maryville.
Where would we take it in? If I could round up the people after the tin's gone, if I could round up the people, machinery, and the trucks and all that, he would take it to Creston.
I could, Maryville. Can't tell you what partners get you a foot? Not the wood and stuff, no. The wood and the roof, the rest of the roofing material, and tin, and all that stuff, will have to be disposed of properly. The, the brick and all that can be used then either to fill the basement, or a ditch, or crossing.
Isn't Maryville a transportation too now, though?
Maryville's a little higher.
Aren't they transportation?
Yeah, it's a transportation, but you can, it's half the distance down there, they wanted this to Creston.
But, clearly, they wouldn't take it?
A lot of times, they won't take it out of, from out of county, unless they have a regular construction portion, if they do that with. DNR has some funny rules sometimes, and stuff like that. And I I just have to check with them, see whether it can even go. But I, you know, technically, a contractor could go to Maryville, though. Rather than jumping in going halfway after. About half the distance.
Oh, Josh said Maryville's cheaper.
I don't know. I think Maryville's cheaper than Creston. That's why, that's why the rollups go down there, I think. Yeah.
I don't know if you wanna do anything with it right now, or just kinda hold off a while, let's see. At least right now, the asbestos is gone, so... He was a little nervous about that the other day. He, when he was up there it's actually a tar that's got asbestos in it, he, he was a little nervous about it, but he had us put some barricades down. He thought it seemed a little friendly. Something I'll have to look at. Certainly wouldn't want to fall on the building next door. Anyway, that portion is, is done. We, we talked about the pool a little bit. On a, on a related note, the refrigerator at the Pulp Palace quit the other day. Had it rented, so I had to go to the pool. Because Larry Wyson didn't have a refrigerator. The only other place we had one was out at the pool, so I took the one from the pool down to the Pulp Palace, so that they would have a refrigerator there. But, and about 30 or 40 weeks, I'll probably have to haul that one back up, but probably want that. I don't know, you, I don't know if you wanna buy a new one, or you wanna just buy a used one somewhere, if you can find one, or...
You said you had the Pulp Palace rented? It was rented?
It was, yeah.
Does that happen a lot?
Well, last summer happened quite a bit, it got rented every Friday night. It's, it's not as, it's not rented as often as we'd like to have it rented, but it does get rented.
I've got another question, are the cities still willing to sell it?
I would know why. It's the right opportunity, instead of itself, I would know why.
You know?
We'll, we'll, we'll do some research on the first, but yeah. It is.
We, we advertised at Lawrence, we tried to sell it, we took the bids on it.
I think it was 20.
Then it ended up on 20, 24.
That comes with a new fridge.
Why, did?
Yeah.
State vending, laugh, and have a ball.
All right, any else, Kenny?
A minute, and I ain't done.
Oh, thank you.
We got rushing.
Well, come on.
Basketball boys want to use the old ambulance building over here for pancake breakfast this weekend. Last year, they did it at the fire station, but they feel like there would be more traffic up here, they could probably raise a little more money. The same day, they're having a yard sale down the street shed, and car wash. So... Is there a reason
they feel they have that room? Let's see what they brought.
No, it used to be that the only place they ever had the pancake breakfast was over here at the always had it. It wasn't always basketball boys, but there's, there's always been a pancake breakfast.
Fire station's a little nicer for setup. Fire station's a lot nicer for setup, because there's chairs, you can already there.
Yeah.
And the power outlets are all working, and there are extension cords and blood breakers.
Yeah.
We found that out doing but it's nice, one nice to have it down there, but you do probably do some traffic.
And that's what they were thinking, just thought.
Well, they were supposed to have the library basement, and somebody didn't have it. Supposed to.
Okay. And they would like to do it, and we're there, and it's still. We talked about a while back siren maintenance, remember that? I got a, I got a proposal from them. Haven't talked to them yet, but they did send me a proposal. Looks like looks like the first inspection for both sirens would be 1867 dollars. That includes eight new batteries.
Eighteen hundred, you said?
Eighteen sixty-seven. Eighteen sixty-seven twenty, to be exact. Then after that, it looks like. About a hundred and one dollars a month.
There was a new set of batteries that come with that every?
Two.
Two years?
For three years. Looks like they have a response time of ninety-six hours, something like that. Trouble is, if it doesn't work, you got more to meet.
So, both sirens would be covered for basically three thousand dollars a year?
Well, I'm thinking after this eighteen hundred dollar one. I'm thinking the first one, which would include the batteries in both of them, would be eighteen hundred. And then after that, it'd be about four.
Where do they come from?
Pardon me?
Where's the company come from?
These guys are out of Green Valley, Missouri.
They'll charge you a hundred dollars a month to drive up here and check.
I don't even need all the fine print out here, but it says. Year per month, the sirens sixteen dollars each per month. The controllers are twelve fifty each per month, and checking all the batteries and service maintenance, five fifty a month.
Also, they're replacing some things each month?
No, that's, that's to get an annual label test, you have to check them all over.
I'll check them once a year, certify them once a year, but same.
I'm.
Sure they won't drive up here once a month. I would drive up here for a hundred bucks and check two sirens. It's all their customers.
And I don't know.
It doesn't sound like money making deal, if you did it once a year and charged a hundred dollars to do it.
Maybe we don't worry about it right now.
Both of them work?
They did the last test.
How long have they been inspected?
This is the company that installed, or just blew out. They're the ones that, if they don't sell sirens or anything, they just do installations and controls. That is the company that installed. I bought them through, they're federal sirens, and I bought them through Danco Emergency Equipment. This, this is the company that does all the install, setup. The, back to the pool again. I had hoped to put it off till next year. But I think probably this fall, we're gonna have to do. Repair maintenance work on the, the gutter, the overflow gutter. The tiles are cracking and chipping a lot, this winter was really hard. I had a bid from the company that I buy my chlorine and stuff from. Last year. Looks like it's gonna be somewhere around ten thousand, ten to eleven thousand dollars to, they'll come in, they'll take off, chip off all the old tile, and then grout all of that, and then put it over paint and pop it down. I would say probably this fall, after we shut it down, you're probably, you're gonna have to go ahead. Do something with that. Something to think about.
You had a grout?
They just keep getting worse and worse.
So they're moving all the tile and grouting, just like concrete over the edge? Instead of tile? Different tile I want?
Nope. It'll just be a grounded, a smooth, just like the wall. They had to have a couple of corners repaired one time, and that's kinda what they did. For those, moisture gets behind them, you have hard weather and threes. Pop stuff off. So. I, I think probably we're gonna have to go ahead and do that. They like to, they prefer to do it in this fall, on this big push. Usually dry, August, September, usually dry weather. And if you get that down and not have to worry about, you get rainy day, and you're trying to get the pool open, and not get. They prefer to do that kinda work in, in the fall. But that, of course, means we're gonna pump it out, and you gotta turn around the fall back in. You can't leave it in for the winter.
Does the number seem a little high? Does it just mean? Does that number seem a little higher, or is that just me?
I don't think, I don't think it seems too bad, but it's a long ways around. And I don't. To me, it didn't seem too bad. It did, I don't know, maybe there's other companies that are moving it, right? I know, some pools have stainless steel gutters, but they said that would be. And they said they actually haven't had that in a lot with stainless steel gutters. You would think that, but it said, sometimes it seems like they have trouble with the seams when they split that grease and all. They don't recommend stainless steel. Not on a retro.
I would think grout would probably be most. Better nature friendly kind of winter.
The plastic walls seem, and they'll stand up pretty easy, some of them, they'll go over a pile or something, get old, run out. Get a little moisture in, get cracked or something. The O and M plan, you saw the changes in that, and you operate some maintenance manuals for the gas. They're changing a lot of stuff on the gas. They updated the whole manual, so we had to adopt that. Also, the wine call system, that they're getting ready to initiate, starting in July, they signed, younger signed the bill already, so July, I think it goes into effect. Everybody, wine call system, if you call in right now, they, they tell you forty-eight hours. And you're supposed to wait that forty-eight hours. If you call in and we go out and locate it, they want, they want us to, we have to start responding by email. They have to do it electronically. And we have to notify them when we get located. So, you know, which is fine and dandy if you only have one or two locates. You can come back in here and sit down at the computer and, you know, do all that stuff. But if you got twenty or twenty-five of them like we've had in a day, or a whole section across the farm field somewhere, then I don't know what to do. They want you, the minute that you get it located, they want you to notify them. So, not sure how we're gonna deal with that. They actually wanted us to notify them for water, notify them for the sewer, notify them for the gas, all three times. Well, they charge us about a one call. So.
How's that?
Yeah. Ninety cents, every one call ticket we give is ninety cents. They've kinda backed off on that, and they said, well, we'll leave it up to the cities. But for now, they're willing to allow you to call in or email and say everything, city, that's okay. The gas line is marked and everything, whatever. So those are changes that are coming too, and they're hidden, kind of finicky with that. Notifications requiring, I call in and, for the guy doing the work, it's gonna be a benefit. Because if you make one call and, and everybody calls in five hours later and says, everything is marked, well, we don't have anything there, then one call's gonna call you back, and they're gonna say, you go to work. So, for the guy that's doing the work, it may, it may be a plus. But I can proceed on the road that there're gonna be. Extra expenses involved somewhere. And that's kind of a brief overview of what all's coming down, more regulations. We're gonna have to buy a rotary mower to mow roadside. Ours is just beyond repair. So, I don't have any idea what they cost, if you have a little bit of money and new equipment left, and they're used, so. But that's, we usually tide the roadside, you know, three times a year, please. We're gonna have it done before Memorial Day, we're gonna just start it. Ideas, suggestions?
When you say rotary mower, you're just talking like a three-point whirlie? Six footer, eight footer?
No, little, little jubilee won't handle any footer, hydraulic one, it don't work anyway, it won't lift it off the ground. You have to just drag it around.
What kind of money you thinking about now?
I, I don't have any idea what it costs.
That certain thing, yeah?
I haven't, first time. Not yet. That's all.
That's all you got now?
Yeah, that's all.
Anybody else in their canny? Alright. Resolution twenty fourteen dash zero five, adopting revised operating and maintenance plan for the gas.
We got one before, we just revised it?
Yeah.
I love that, what is, can you sum that up for me, what we're doing here?
It's all the changes that they, that the state has requested, like, not necessarily the state, the utility board and the department transportation, all of the changes that they have made into, we've had an operating maintenance plan for years. They, once they started regulating that stuff, they'll have it, then they'd say, we gotta have this year, that year. Well, they've made enough changes in it now, that they suggest we just re-adopt the whole thing. Notifications are different now, if there's an incident, we have to notify the utility board within an hour. Just things that they're changing.
Motion? Motion, we approve resolution twenty fourteen dash.
Thanks. And then it's seconded, Karen? And?
I.
Question, Karen? Approval of class C liquor license renewal with outdoor sales for the locker room. Remove the revenue? We've been favored, all in favor? All opposed? Question, Karen? Mr. Scholke, you're up.
Already at the end, no? Uh, I guess I had a couple things on the list. Three thirteen Main Street, between Andy Thomas and I. Is starting to fall down, the roof's coming in on us for years, Kenny's been in it. I don't know what city hasn't planned for it, if there's nothing in plan for it, and just wants to, you know, let it fall down, that's fine. This puts me and Andy Thomas in, you know, jeopardy a little bit, 'cause we don't know what happens when it does fall. Good damages, our building, just like it did the, the conway on the corner, had the top tip first. And those rafter saw, it'll kick the bricks out, anyway. Um, so it's, it's a problem for basically you guys and me and Andy Thomas. If it does come down, unless he takes it down, we'll still have to prepare the walls, so they're ready for, you know, weatherproofing, and basically re-insulate and stuff. And so basically what I'm asking for, they really don't want the building, however, since it is attached to my building, I have some dire interest in it, well as Andy Thomas. I've seen if there's any way, there's like almost seven thousand dollars of the taxes owed against it. I haven't contacted the owner yet, see if I even can get it from him, maybe he's not interested in selling it, I don't know what his interests are anymore. And so I talked to the county, the county said they have some penalties against it, they can abate. However, there still is the current taxes due on it, whatever that would be. And I know that I didn't make the meeting in time to get any movement tonight, I just wanted to think about it. I'm willing to obtain the building and the property myself, if I, I would, my part would be to fix the roof, so it doesn't leak anymore. Stabilize the back wall, the back wall's starting to shift. Wonder about the contents, about cleaning that up yet, but I just wanna basically stop the water from coming in the building, to stop the further demise of it, whatever. Thanks. And, uh, anyway, so basically, I'm just asking for, I don't want any problem, you know, past problems with the taxes. If I do take on this project, because it benefits me just because it protects my building, but I don't really have a plan for the building, I'm saying. And so I'd be asking for the forgiveness of the taxes, and also I'd ask for a tenure tax abatement if I put a new roof on it. That's what I'm gonna ask for next meeting, so I'll ask for a motion next meeting of some sort. So it's kinda where I'm at there, so I think it'll benefit both of us, 'cause if it does fall down, you still pay the taxes anyways, you're feeling from the other buffet. I mean, the taxes are still gonna be owed, plus you'll have to haul it off. And so it's, it's not really a lever, but it's just fact, that we still have to be held off. That's the first thing I just wanted to talk about, so it's just kinda, bring that up again next month and ask for a motion, go ahead.
So, if we did that, you would, you wouldn't tear it down, you'd fix the roof?
No, we'd remove the roof, joists one by one, replace them, put the roof back on, so the building will stand as it is today. Except, unpaint the front of it, etc., but, I mean, I might eventually be able to put a business front in front of it, rental space. Something that's useful. I, just something to help with the roof, like I said, I have no purpose for this building, besides just to protect the building structure and my structure.
You said, who, who gave almost seven thousand on it?
Yeah, the owner of the current property address, the current bill, if he walked in today, he'd have to pay six thousand eight hundred and some pennies.
City taxes?
And city and county taxes, there's a lot of, like, uh, I get like a water bill and stuff, and trash, and just, it's got almost two thousand dollars of interest put on it, and something.
You talked to the county already?
The county said they would be willing to bait their part of the interest and stuff. That isn't, I don't know what else is left, the paint wasn't there today, to tell the exact number. That isn't, I don't know what else is left, the paint wasn't there today, to tell the exact numbers.
I guess the county's not wanting to get rid of the principal, just the...
Yeah, the interest that they said, yeah. And such is something to think about, I can get you, I'll bring the papers that have the exact number of the payment, it's back Monday. She can break it down a little more, of what actually is interest and what's actually principal. And you can have that for next meeting. So that's just, any questions on that, I guess? Something to think about. And also, in kind of the same category, is that the buildings downtown, like, two have already fallen, this third one's starting to go down. We need to come up with something as of law, I mean, we need like a lawyer to look into what we can do to protect these buildings we have left, because they're just gonna keep falling out like dominos. And it's, water damage is the biggest thing that happens to them, and it's just, you need somebody, like a building inspector, or somebody that knows enough about the building, it's like, advise somebody, or I don't know. We need ordinance of some sort, so we can actually obtain the building and do a ten thousand dollar, you know, repair to the roof, at least have a building left, rather than waiting until it falls down, pay the back taxes, and the cleanup. It'd be a way more proactive approach to get, you know, put a ten thousand dollar roof on it, try to find a buyer, you know. Because once it gets this far, I mean, future generations can't even bring it back, so... So I just need an ordinance, I just need to ask, you know, maybe, make a motion or something, if I can't do that. Anyway, but anyway, the lawyers just start looking, I guess, to see what we can do legally, if we can get, you know, make people sign something if they own a building on Main Street, I don't know. So forfeit their rights, if they neglect them, I don't know how that would work, but... So if we want to sign online up, by the way. I just, it needs something. Seven like Madison, I'm gonna ask for a parking curb there on Madison and Pearl. The north side of the house, I'd like to remove that curb, make a parking on the north side of the house. Park it at an angle up against the house. So you get off the street, the parking, outside tenants in there, and you got crowded on the street there. I'll be asking for that as well. I don't know if there's any complications with that or not.
They do with the sidewalk. Has some parking on the sidewalk.
Yeah. The sidewalk on the other side as well, but yeah, the other side left there. Anyway, that's just some ideas. Sorry to get on there earlier, but...
You're just giving us a...
Just giving you a warning, yeah.
Do you think you could... Your family, you guys, you guys get those, or some trucks and things? Right?
Sure.
Just as a starting point, maybe, you're it, you guys, I'm sure there's other people, Kim wants to maybe help, but we can, we can pay your costs. Put me on the spot, but maybe would you donate your time to help us take that building out, if we could do it? You see what I'm saying?
I got you.
And I'll, you know, you don't save snow, but just put that in mind, you think about this for a month. I'll be there, we'll get a bunch of people, try to save the city money, so we don't pay some make them in. But like, would be nothing out of pocket for you, hopefully we can set it up, that's my, my goal. Is just, just, if you donate your time. You know, we can pay you wear and tear on things, hopefully, rather than... Yeah, why don't we just, I mean, you guys, push dirt around.
You'd find a place to haul it off to a burner or something. That'd be cool. Burn it first, then haul it?
Yeah, if you don't say that.
Yeah, if it's a big rock truck, you could haul it somewhere and burn it, and then haul it to the...
We can't. You have to be... Let's see, there are all the regulations on that, too.
Regulations.
Just the regulations.
I suppose since the asbestos is gone, if you have more options on...
Yes. I like your proactive idea for in the future, though. I also think we need to do something about that, I don't have any idea legally.
Because Tammy was talking about, there's other towns that I haven't looked into that.
Well, there's, there's a whole bunch of issues there, one of the things is, there's a part of the Iowa code that allows you right now to file petition to gain title to abandon property. But it's a rather long process through district court, and you have to make sure to break your property. It amounts to the city ending up owning property. We've got today, there's building code section and deuces that we can go out to. Corinda has a, a building maintenance code section. They have a real intensity yet, it's fairly new. They have a four-time fire chief who's their building inspector. Now, I don't know the mechanism, but it's not that he's just going from door to door and coming in and inspecting you, I think it's probably new construction, any changes that you're gonna make, that might allow you in. But I don't know what that mechanism is, so here you have to, number one, decide what standards you're gonna use. And there are a bunch of various building standards out there that you can pick from. Or you're gonna just kind of come up with your own. I would probably recommend using some existing set of standards. Number two, who's gonna be the inspector? I don't know if you can, through a twenty-eighty contract, county sanitaryian to do it, I think Lennox has done that on some buildings. So you can handle, that's one angle. You can hire someone, but then they have to probably be, you're gonna wanna have someone that's just not, you know, go six back out the street, lots of ass, and has certification of some sort of... Something credentials to back up their contention that, you know, you're, I've inspected your property, and here's the standards, I don't believe against those standards. The other thing you may run into with some of these, either state standards, or some of the international ones that the state has adopted, that you can adopt, is they're really pretty stringent. And I know Lennox tried doing a, not, not for just building maintenance, but they tried to have something for rental property. And it caused a huge backlash. They had a lot of people, they decided not to do it, because they had a lot of people that were offended by the idea of, you know, I'm a good landlord, why are you picking on me? So, those are some of the things you run into. I think the bottom line is, a lot of these buildings, you've got owners that are judgment-proof, have no money, don't care. The county probably owns a tax certificate, or has tax certificate on it. The county will bring you to let go of the principal on those taxes, they may be able to let go of the neighbors on it. We found that out in those other two, we did, so... It's kind of a slow process, but you can, there are, there are ways you can do that, but it all, it all, probably a fair amount of money.
So once the county...
The fall down was pretty extensive, too.
Yeah. So like, when the, when the county says they have the tax sale on it, at that point, could the city buy the building then, if the tax sale starts that process? That isn't customizing it?
They, if it goes up for a tax sale, and no one buys it, then it's assigned to the county, and then it just sits there, yeah, they could.
The city could buy it if it's minimum tax sale, or the money got accrued for ten years.
Yeah.
But they shouldn't be that large at that point, they should be...
Whatever's owed against us, seven thousand dollars is what they have to pay.
But that was, the link went back in two thousand and six for seventeen hundred dollars.
Whatever's owed against it has to be paid. Whatever tracers there is.
Headed off, headed off back in...
But I would say, why, why wait ten years, then try to fail the government, is what I'm saying, you know?
If we were, if there's, a red flag pops up, hey, we've done this week, the building.
Yeah.
Like, if it hits two grand, or three grand.
Oh, it's better if it goes up for tax sale, the city knows. But do you want the city to own a lot of property?
Then you have to wait, what, three years before you can do anything, to have a right of redemption?
Yeah, and then once the city gets the tax sales, you have to do that, they notice the right, and they can actually... And the sadness was to where Montgomery County assigned tax sales, it's the city, we did, in the three years that passed, we did a ninety-eight notice. And one of the six properties, the person came in and paid, and they really, were hoping they would, because it's a junk house, they wanted to take down. And so then you just, you don't have that property. And then the cycle completes itself again, but... Yeah, you can go in early on and then try and get those properties. But it's not a quick process. That is the problem that every small town has.
Because I know Lennox, all their shop owners, they all get their roof stuck pointed at the same time. They do their sidewalks at the same time, pretty much.
I know they have no inspections, or anything like that, as far as...
I think the roof guy just generally comes rev, at a certain time every so many years, and I, I really think he does. Yeah. So there's often really check for it.
That's been unfortunate, though, we've had some building owners that didn't want to do that building, they just wanted to suck whatever they could get out of there, as far as business, and leave town, and that was it.
But when after two months, they were, they were judgment-proof. We have fines, they're still owed, they're, the two owners, and I know we took through district court, we're just tested. And, you know, you can, I suppose you can see us don't use the property better than we're in the same boat we're in with these other two properties. At least at this point in time.
It'd be easier to find somebody like Zed, though, to take it over. They, we'll tell him, forgive it, deed it to this guy or this one.
Yeah, and I'm guessing the bigger share of the taxes are gonna be the county's.
School.
Yeah, percentage of that, too.
Debt service, they can't give away debt service.
Seriously, is that in on that? That's it? I, I just got one more quick question for Kenny. Two or three months ago, we talked about the company coming in and running our gas service for us. Have you done any number crunching or looking on that?
You know, they... I looked at some of that. I'm just... All sounds good, but they won't... What they wanna do is kind of make a pitch to you guys, so they, so I don't have a lot of detail, he doesn't want, he wants to wait. You know, I'm a little...
Be a little leery with them selling to us?
Still has to come back, yeah. Regulations keep going where they are, I may change my mind in a year, but...
Yeah, sound like they're getting kind of crazy and wild now.
They're getting crazy. Part of it's just particularly the Iowa, you tell them, they're just getting... Some of it's coming down from Washington DC, Department of Transportation. Every time there's an accident, every time a pipeline blows up, with Tammy, you know, they get... Right now, things just choose to move.
Any last question? When you guys do, when you made, did you make an ordinance about parking? You're gonna know, because you guys got a complaint about it, I know. Did the ordinance pass with the no parking east of Madison Street, on the south side of Main Street?
It was on the, the parking would be on the north side.
Okay, but they can still park on the south side?
Yes.
But they're still not allowed to park across the public sidewalk, correct?
Right. You're not supposed to park...
Even if you are a law enforcement officer, correct?
You're not supposed to park there's a, the streets, I go, ordinance just says that you're not supposed, actually, you're not supposed to park between the curb line and the property line.
And law enforcement is not exempt, correct?
It says for everyone.
Okay, that's, because I've got three people that are really ticked off. I've had my yard yelling at me, and it's like, I didn't park it there. I will not park across my home driveway ever again, either.
You know, there are some places where, where there just isn't hardly room. But, you know...
But it is hard with traffic going through there, I've seen some pretty big trucks.
Yes.
And even the garbage truck has had trouble going up through that middle zone.
See, other than the garbage truck, there shouldn't be a truck.
There shouldn't be.
I know.
It only takes stuff out.
There are some strays that come through.
Yes, there are.
I don't think I've got them to park, they were gonna, they were afraid to drive a post in there, or something, because they're...
There was three cars parked, I was down there the other day, and it was, it was hard for me to get through with my floor.
Yeah, jump one call, Tammy.
You know somebody, do that one call for you? I'm gonna be a jerk. I'm gonna be a jerk.